Yeah.
All right. I'll call this meeting to order. This is the work session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee County of Cochise and state of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, September 8, 2020, at 5:30 PM via Zoom. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the role?
Mayor Pro Tem Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns is excused. Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein. Nothing yet. City staff Teresa Coleman, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Jesus Harrow, public works director, Joe Ward, building inspector, and William McDonald, city attorney.
Thank you. The, we have four items to discuss. This is a work session, so it will be discussion only. Hello, Joe. How are you?
So far, so good.
All of us, so far, so good. So we'll start with item one, obviously. Discussion upon, on the request for the transfer of certain city property located adjacent to and west of 104 Diaz and David and 144 Lachlan Avenue. Ms. Coleman.
Yes, thank you. And I'm gonna lean on Joe just a little bit. Joe, did this go to planning commission?
This went before the P and Z and they have, they approved sending it to mayor and council.
Okay.
But they, but they had a, a lot of, of confusion as far as, as the, well, this, this is the sale of the property, which isn't, which, I don't know if this fits into what we had discussed about the, what we had had the problems with over the ease or the right of ways.
Right.
Properties. So, well, it, does this property have, I don't remember, does this property have a, a, a parcel ID number? Do you remember?
No, it's, it's two parcels that were created by survey.
Okay.
That have not been assigned parcel numbers.
Yeah.
So that is the basic introduction, and I think Will's gonna take it away from here.
Great. Mr. McDonald.
Yeah, the floor is mine, folks. So Teresa, this was created by survey. Are we, are we certain that the city has, or not, this isn't in the area that the city has burdened a parcel through an easement, correct?
This appears to be land that's within the city limits and not needed to anyone else.
Okay. All right, so I think the appropriate course of action here is to actually, actually get a title history to the property before the city, you know, makes any decisions relative to the property itself. But if it was created by survey and it's under an acre in size, and do we have an assessed value of the property itself?
I'm gonna go back to Joe.
I don't have my papers in front of me, I'm sorry. But we had, we had, we had, with the, with the planning and zoning, we had, not, there, there wasn't a, an assessment of, but just a, I go through there and I compare it with other properties and such. It was about $3 a square foot.
$3 a square foot, okay.
So just to, just so for my clarification, this is the strip of public land between those two properties, right? If I remember right, looking at the maps, this is what I'm looking at?
Yes, and a little additional land to the north, the west. Yeah.
Okay. I'm familiar with it.
And, and just as a, as a last analytical piece here for discussion is, did the city via ordinance or any other means accept this land via survey? Did it accept the dedication to this land at any point?
Hmm, yes, I can answer that.
Okay, all right. It looks like we need to, to follow up with a bit more history on this, on this parcel. Obviously, we have a survey out there that, that, you know, either assigns or attempts to assign, but we actually need something tangible that, that locks in the city's ownership relative to this property or, or ownership relative to this parcel generally. And I, I think we need to get some title history here, similar to what we've done elsewhere in the city, clarify some things, and then also, you know, analyze it compared to transfers of property that are valued at less than $5,000 and that are less than an acre in size, and do what's appropriate once, once we're in a decision phase relative to the property after a little bit more investigation.
All right. Ashley, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did have a comment on this one.
Yes, please.
Um, this is to mayor and council members. Thanks for the opportunity to address you again regarding our desire to purchase the property that adjoins ours in Lachlan Avenue. If you refer to the survey document that we submitted, our backyard is separated from the rest of our property by a strip of land approximating 10 foot wide. We are trying to obtain this strip in order to join our properties together. The land on the west side of the property is an old dirt driveway that accesses our back lot. Currently, we only own a piece of that driveway and would like to include the rest of it in the purchase. Thank you for your consideration, Ken and Sandy Huesman.
And.
I have a question.
Miss, go ahead.
They said that, that means that they're gonna be taking over the access of that dirt road. Does that dirt road go, I can see that it continues and it looks like there's another house over there. Does that cut them off from the access of that? And why wouldn't it just be up to the dirt road and keep that an open access?
I think that's primarily what had happened there, Joan.
Well, it sounded like they said that they own part of the dirt, dirt road and they wanted to extend it to own all of it in the, the statement. Or did I misunderstand it?
I don't, I don't think that's accurate. I think what they're asking for is up to the, up to the dirt road because that provides access for people back further beyond.
Right. I just wanted, I wanted clarification on that because it, it's really hard to see with the, the map that they have, how, because it's not outlined on the one that actually looks at the, the property. And the other ones, and I'm not a survey, so I don't know all these, you know, degrees and bearings and all of that. But I just want to make sure that that's not gonna be blocked.
Well, I, I have a, a comment. Why aren't we asking for a title report on any of these that are coming to us? Is, is there a reason?
I think it just hasn't been part of the application process before, and it's something that now that we see it as a concern can start adding to that application process.
So we could actually put in there that if they wish to purchase land, that at their expense, they include a title report?
Yes, we could do that.
Well, I, I think that that's a good idea to think about in the near future. I see that the housemans are on here and have asked to speak. That's, I think that's appropriate. If no one has a, a problem with that, I'd like to recognize them. So are you there? You're muted, Ashley.
It's telling me that they're using an older version, so I don't know if they're gonna be allowed. Let me see. They're rejoining it at, in a different format, so it looks like they just popped up down below.
There they are, okay.
Hopefully, they can hear us. Let me make sure that they're not muted. Sandy, can you hear us? I don't know that they can hear us. It looks like their video is off, but I don't know if they have audio.
Right.
I will email them or message them with a call-in number if you wanna keep talking.
Okay.
I, I don't know if you have other things that you need to discuss.
Yeah, what, what? Jesus, you were shaking your head.
It looks like, from what I recall, because I did speak with them, is that the driveway is actually there, I see their video just came up. Their driveway actually just goes just beyond their wall and, and I know that Ms. Hanson was, was wondering whether the driveway, if they were to acquire, it would block anybody off. I don't believe it does because the property where the driveway is located next to it is actually our reservoir. So there is nothing between our reservoir and their property.
Okay, all right. Sandy and Ken, are you there? I see your lips moving, as they say, but I sure don't hear you. Isn't this technology wonderful? Well, is anybody here though?
I'm gonna go ahead and try to get him a call-in number real quick.
Yeah.
Jesus. You said that it's, it's next to the reservoir, but there's another one that is closer to the two shaded areas, and I thought that that was the area that we're looking at. That's their property. And then the, the strip between them and then the area below.
I assume you're looking at the survey. Let me pull up the survey really fast.
I, oh, it's the, it's the one of the, the geographic location, because there's another one. It looks like there's a building behind it.
Oh, behind it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I see. So there's two, you see the two parcels, this strip of land between there's, there'd be one behind it.
And then it looks like that, that road forks off.
Sure, let me look at another map real fast here, here. No. Okay, so I do see what you're saying. I'm looking at a Google Earth image also. The building behind it, so the driveway portion of it, let me pull up, go back to, the driveway portion is right next to the, the upper, or I guess it would be the left, if you're looking at the, the image there, the portion of the highlighted parcels. The building to the south actually comes, yeah, to the south, because north is up. The building there actually accesses Lachlan away from their driveway. They, they are fur, so there's actually two driveways. Of the image that you're looking at really doesn't show it very well. If you have, if you have access to a little Earth image, and I'm looking at one from May 4th, 2019, that's a satellite image, there's, there's a definitive two accesses to.
They're, they're almost on, I promise. Technology.
Because there's, there's, there's two different, I mean, there's a house in, in spot or 104 C, and then there's another one that's 142. So even if it goes to the left, it looks like there's still a house behind there.
There is a house behind there. You're, you are correct. They, there are two, two accesses to Lachlan and the, the, the image that they gave us is not, does not show it very well, but the driveway that they're talking about that they own, just a push note, is right next to a wall that they have there. It's extremely close to the, the property without, with actually having to go out there and, and, you know, verify that the access is and have them resurvey, say, does they, do they still have access? But I am very highly confident that we aren't, we would not be blocking access to that property if this were to.
Yeah, I see a, a road on top there.
Okay.
All right.
A lot of times, the actual parcels don't match up perfectly with the satellite image, so I think it's just a skew a little bit.
Okay.
Are, are we live, Sandy?
Yeah, I can hear you. I have a couple of, let me turn your, turn this down. I have a couple of comments. First of all, the driveway is not the shared driveway that goes to the house behind us. It's totally separate. It's just a very faint little driveway that you'll see on the satellite image. So it doesn't connect with anything, and it does dead end at the end of our property. Maybe in the mining days it continued, but it doesn't now. It stops right at the end of our property. So the driveway is separate. We do own a parcel, a little piece of it already, if you can see it on the survey, and we're just trying to get access to that backyard. The other thing is, I think that the price set at the planning and zoning and then approved by the board already was 250 a square foot.
Okay. With that, that, Sandy, that does have to come to the council for the amount of money, but.
It did already.
Not the council.
Yeah. Yes, it's been to the board already and approved.
That was the, I, I believe that was planning and zoning.
No, it, it already, it went to the council already too. It was approved and it was gonna be up for auction, and then COVID hit.
Okay.
So we've been waiting about six months.
Right. Yeah, I wished I could apologize for that, too. Okay, any questions? While, while, while Sandy and Ken are here, do we have any questions of them? Nope, okay. All right.
Yeah, I did, I did. I have a quick question.
Ms. Giacamino, go ahead.
Now, is this the property that has the hiking trails behind it?
No.
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 Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any, anything else? And houseman, you, you do understand, we're not voting on anything tonight. This is simply a work session. We're just trying to stretch it out longer for you, and I apologize for that. All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate all your efforts that we could talk. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Item number two, discussion on the request to abandon an easement adjacent to parcel 103-99-053 B as a boy, also known as 223 Youngblood Hill, as described in the attached survey. Ms. Coleman?
Yes, so I'm doing a little more research and not official title work. This parcel, the requested, the surveyed portion is actually within a parcel that belongs to Phelps Dodge or Freeport-Mackay. So this is actually a request that doesn't appear as appropriate for the city.
Wow. I think that kind of points out again what my, my statement earlier that we, in my opinion, we should consider requiring a title search when these items are brought to us so that we don't pick up and step on our, shoot ourselves in the foot, and that in fact, what we're doing is, is proper and legal. So I, I would like that as an agenda item in the near future to discuss, please.
Yeah, we can adjust the process and see if that's something that needs to be adjusted in the code, or if it's simply a form item that we can adjust.
Do you have any idea on that, Will?
I would need to look at the code. My, my inclination is that it's an administrative procedure that can be tacked on to pre-existing administrative procedures. It's within the scope of our boards and our commissions. I don't know if it necessarily needs to be fleshed out in the code, if it hasn't already been fleshed out, which I doubt it has. And so I think, yeah, we just deal with it as part of our, as part of our existing administrative procedure for getting these properties in front of boards and commissions.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any, any questions on this at this point? Mr. Pollak.
Ms. Coleman, are we looking to, is it, is the request that we abandon an easement on property that we don't own?
Yes, as it turns out.
Okay. And my, so follow up to that is, is this easement necessary for the city of Bisbee? Can we live without it?
Yes.
So the, the way I, this is, I looked at this originally, we're going to this because there is that drainage way there. I asked that they, in that process, actually dedicate a drainage easement so that we maintain the drainage through there. That would be the only thing that, that I feel would be of interest to, to, to continue to have regulation over.
Yeah, so we would need to pursue that with Freeport-Mackay.
Wouldn't they?
Would we pursue?
I'm sorry.
Do that. It would, the acquisition of the property would be between the claimant and Freeport-Mackay, not the city, correct? We would just be, okay, thank you.
Right, but if we want a drainage easement that we have control of, then we would want to work that through with Freeport-Mackay ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Does the city have any sort of easement for the sewer that runs off that hill?
Ooh, let me look.
I live right across the street from there. When I sit on my front porch, I stare directly at that property. I've been staring at that property for the last 14 years.
Has it moved?
Yes, actually, it has moved quite a bit since Todd got one.
Yeah, yeah, it moved a lot, didn't it?
Very good.
I don't believe I have access to my sewer maps to see where our sewer main is. Looking at the survey, if we do have a sewer main there, we, doesn't look like we have any kind of easement. So if that were the case, and I, I would also suggest in addition to the drainage easement that would benefit, we also ask that they dedicate a public utility easement.
And my volume is turned all the way up.
Ms. Klein, are you, I'm sorry. You just, you got, you both just lit up there, so I didn't know if you had a question, Ms. Klein or Ms. Giacamino?
I'm having trouble hearing. I, I'm not picking up very well.
Does anybody else have an issue?
Not me.
Who? You have seen mine? Let me pick mine up. Yeah, it, it's not.
We can hear you. Now we can't. Okay. Any, any other discussion on this?
Well, so what's gonna have to happen is, is Todd's gonna have to get with the mining company and, and, and see about it. I, you know, that, that little piece of land around the house, his house there, you know, it's, I'm sure the mining company has no use for it whatsoever. It's, you know, but that's something he has to find out.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Item three, discussion on the request to abandon the easement dividing Mr. Collins' properties near Adams Avenue to exclude the Adams Avenue easement, City Trail easement, and Ridge Trail easement. Ms. Coleman?
Thank you. So this again is a request based on a survey provided to the city. Again, to Will's point, there was no title work done up to this point either. And then I think, Joni, this is the property that has the two trails you're concerned about, the Ridge Trail and the City Trail.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Collins is asking that they be included in the property that he acquires. I would recommend that the city retain those easements, so there's no confusion in the future.
Absolutely. Four years ago, the only issue that I had when I ran for city council was to keep the City Trail and the Ridge Trail in operation and not to make it a tourist attraction. It was something for the residents of Old Bisbee. The trail goes behind my house, and I would hate to see the, the city include those easements in, in any transfer of property. That should be something for the citizens of Old Bisbee.
How about the rest of Bisbee too, Bill?
You guys can come over too. We will be able to show your passports.
All right, we, we have, Mr. Collins has, has joined us, and Ashley has a written statement, but why don't we just go ahead and let Mr. Collins state what he was gonna state? Mr. Collins, are you there? Kelly Collins, you're on, you're muted.
Hi, to Adam, right now, I don't know if they can, if they have audio available. I do have their written comments as well.
Okay. Yeah, you're the, Kelly, you're the sister, right? I see, okay. We're gonna go ahead and read the written comments then. So Ashley, would you?
Of course, let me get there. Okay. A message to council. I would like to clarify my intention for the land and trails. The existing trails are part of the soul of Bisbee and one of the many reasons I fell in love with the city. I have no interest or intention to hinder access to the trails. I would like to combine many lot, my many lots into as few as possible. I intend to build a small home and live in Bisbee. I ask that I'm able to maintain access to my land and that the discontinuities between my lots are minimal. Thank you, Kevin Collins. And that's all I have.
Okay. Empty. Kelly, do you have anything further to add from that?
No, nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, and thanks for being with us. Further questions? Bill, does that satisfy your?
Yes, I, I, you know, I'm happy with what, with what Kelly said. That's satisfying. Yes.
Any questions from any, anybody? Any questions from any, anybody?
Um, I do. So if property transfer goes through, does that still mean that it's going to be accessible to the public?
She has said that.
Is that what was said?
Yeah, that's what she just said. I'm sorry, actually that, that he said via, via the, the written comment.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Hanson. Ms. Hanson, take yourself up, mute.
I know, no, I shouldn't mute myself. I, I just feel uncomfortable not having those access points part of the city. I would prefer them not to be part of that package. It's all well and done, you know, well and good now, but.
Well, that also can be written into the agreement, but that's, is that not true, Will?
Yeah, I think something along the lines of a reversionary interest should the current landowner sell the, the property or the collection of parcels or divide them at any point. There, there can be agreements that, that suss out those scenarios. And, and we can contemplate that further in terms of what prospectively we, we think the parties can come to an agreement on relative to access to the current easement and, and these valuable trails in the city.
Thank you, sir. Right, that's what I was saying. I believe we can protect ourselves. Mr. Harrow.
I, I guess for Will too, are those actual easements or the, or are they trying to acquire public land? Because if they're trying to acquire public land in that transaction, couldn't do, couldn't we stipulate that there's a public access easement? So that way she actually, the, the property owner actually does own the land, but the public has access, a, a access easement to those trails.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, Jesus. I, the way I contemplated was that this existed as a public access easement. But there may be something that I'm not seeing here in the attached exhibits to the agenda as to the nature of the easement itself that, that isn't contemplated necessarily, you know, within this, this meeting. I think we just need to suss out a little bit more as to the nature of this easement, but it calls to question, yeah, I think this is, we can preserve it as a public access easement to perpetuity as part of the agreement to preserve, you know, these trails.
Ms. Hanson.
I, I'm getting confused. There are some times that we, we have property easements or whatever and they're sold and there are other times that they're not. Is, can we not sell easements? Or we have to, and we can only abandon them? What are, what's the rules on that?
We can sell an easement where, to a property owner where the city has fee ownership, outright ownership of a parcel or a piece of, of property. And then we sell an interest in it in terms of an easement. We did that recently in the city relative to a sky bridge, if, if people recall. But where the city has an easement over a property, it doesn't own it outright. There's some, we're burdening a piece of property that somebody else actually owns. And so there, therein lies our abandonment process that we have a statutory right to that the city determines through its, its legislative process that it no longer has an interest, a public interest in the easement that it's burning another landowner's property. And so then it gives up or abandons that, that particular easement. For example, we have an easement for a right-of-way, but the city no longer has any adjacent parcels to that right-of-way, has no interest in that right-of-way, and it's better left to the private owners because those parcels over time have gone to private owners. And the city just all of a sudden, you know, for whatever reason had an easement there, but no longer needs that for, for public, for general public access where it's better left to the private owners. That's an immediate scenario that comes to mind, but.
Is it a case of whether or not there are like lines that go through that easement, like APS or, or not APS, but water lines, sewer lines, whatever?
Right, franchise agreements through, yeah, and that's a bit of a more particular scenario. Obviously, we, we go into agreements, sub-agreements with those franchises. And there's also notice requirements to the franchises. If, say, for example, the city was abandoning its easement and it has to notice the, the franchises of that. And they have their own easement, so there's, there's going to be layers of, of easements made by burning one parcel.
I have a quick question.
Ms. Giacomo.
So you talked about, I can't pronounce what you called it, perpetual or like it would be ongoing? That can only be broken by future council decision, right? So like if you, we'll let up this land, but with the intent that those trails remain a public access forever and ever. And the only way it can be changed is if a council comes in later, right? And they can overrule that?
Yeah, that's, that's the contemplation because one thing about an easement, especially in Arizona law, the content, even when it says into, in perpetuity or perpetual easement is the more legal term of art here. The, it's contemplated within Arizona law that, okay, it's perpetual until somebody gives it up through some kind of conveyance or, or means of, of giving it up. So there's always the contemplation that these aren't permanent outright because the city doesn't own it outright. And so it's perpetual until something happens. And yes, the council's decision to say abandon that perpetual easement would be the appropriate scenario. So thank you.
If it were to change hands, that would not then break that, would it? It would still remain intact?
Right, it, it would be in the, in the transfer of title. It's, it's similar to, gosh, I, I think a good scenario here would be you have utilities burdening your land. That transfers as the title transfers from owner to owner because it's not like the gas company is going to comment, oh, well, a new owner came in, now we have to rip up the, the gas line. So this is, this is kind of the, the, the protections that we have when we, we put into a deed or something that, or a title that this, this is a perpetual in nature.
Thank you.
Anything else? Item number four. Discussion on the request for Marguerite Connors and Sean McIntyre to grant a 20-foot-wide easement adjacent to parcel 103-61-006. Ms. Coleman.
Yes, thank you. So these folks need to repair a wall at the back of their property and they've requested this easement to allow them into the area they need access to. I'm going to let Will talk a little bit more about that because there is an idea that they perhaps only need a temporary easement for this particular project.
Yeah, so this, this brings up an interesting scenario that's not well contemplated in our code or statutes is where we have this kind of temporary conveyance. It's not an outright sale of land or a, a permanent interest in the land. And so to my mind, my analysis is to, to the point that if, if it really, they just need a temporary easement that we can convey on a temporary basis to grant them that for the purpose of, you know, their, you know, what they need to do at the property. And then rescind the same after either a set amount of time where then if they don't reach that deadline, we can, they can reapply essentially. What calls to mind is essentially, this is like a permit for, for use of, for use of an easement. And so I don't know, I can't call immediately if the, if the city has something that we can build on for a permitting process of this nature or if we're going to have to develop it out of whole cloth. That's something that I'll, I'll task myself with looking into deeper. But as far as a conveyance of land or a sale of land, I don't know if, if, if the property owners don't think they need it. I don't see why we need to go through the extra processes that are required of the council and city.
Mr. Harrow.
So I, I've spoken with engineer and the property owners. And if I, if I remember correctly, their wall right there that is shown is essentially on the edge of their property line. What they're asking for is to be able to anchor, to, to repair that wall and anchor it 10 feet outside of their property line. If we grant them a temporary easement, essentially what happens is their anchors are not on their property anymore. They ask for the extra feet for the, the extra beyond that 10 feet for maintenance. The, the easement concept or if we require them to purchase it, or I don't know. But I'm, I, I did suggest to them that, that it would be something where it would be more of a, a, a maintenance easement. If they have anchors in that 10 feet and then plus, so they've got 10 feet and then an extra 10 feet for, for maintenance. I'm not quite sure that it would be a good idea to be building anything on top of their anchors anyway because they couldn't at that point maintain their anchors. That's, I, I did suggest to them that, that they go and for this easement. If we gave it temporary, then if there is any maintenance in the future, whether it's this current property owner or a future property owner, they'd be coming back again for, for access to, to maintain that. So I'm not quite sure that, I, that's, that's up to the, the council to, to decide. But I did suggest to them that they go for a maintenance easement on this.
Would that, I have a question.
Ms. Giacomo.
Would that then explain the extreme price discrepancy in comparison to all the others?
I don't know the price. I, 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 once it, once they came to me, I, I explained to them what I would suggest, what I would be, what I would, if, if come to me and ask whether the public works department approved of this, I would, that's what I suggested. I didn't, I, I'm not privy to, to any of the price. I guess I should look at that.
Well, so this is not to purchase, so they're not making an offer to purchase, which would be the difference in the pricing.
Yeah, so they don't actually own it. They, they only have a right to, to maintain the structures in there to maintain that wall.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
So why, why wouldn't it just be a 10-foot? Because then if they need to, I, I don't understand why they would have to have an easement or even a permit to go on that land to, to do repairs to something that they, that they own. I mean.
They don't own it. At this point, they don't own it. It's the, the, they only own up to the wall. If, and anybody correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is they only own up to the, to the wall. Anything beyond that is public land. And so that's the city's responsibility, in my understanding, to, to maintain and to regulate. I, I simply just, I, I suggested the easement, so their, their anchor goes out 10 feet. They're going to need more beyond that to, for access. They need to get beyond that 10 feet so that they can do any maintenance to that. That's why that goes to the 20 feet. Again, this is, it was my suggestion for, for an easement. We could, it, it could be up to the council, but there are other mechanisms. You could require them to, to purchase it. And at what point did, at one point, at which point then they, if that goes through the council, again, anybody correct me if I'm wrong, then they have, they get to do with what they want on their property.
Mr. Harrow, I think it'd be helpful if you could explain to Ms. Hanson and anybody else what anchoring means, what physically what that anchoring means so that it's, it's understood that there's literally something on that land.
Yeah.
Yes, they, they.
What I'm saying is that if, if you're going to do the easement and why are you doing an easement further than what they really just need to?
He's going to explain that to you, Ms. Hanson.
Well, I know it's for maintenance, but I don't understand why you need an easement for maintenance.
To access their, to access their anchors. There, there will be actual, if you could, for, to, for analogy purposes, essentially what they'd be doing is they'd put, be putting a, a, like a drywall anchor into the ground. And then be a, there, there would be a, a mechanical mechanism that holds that wall up. If you can see on their drawing, there, there, that goes up the hill, up the mountain there. And so they'd be putting in there something that, that holds that wall in, in place. Anything beyond that 10 feet is only, is for the purpose of getting on the other side of their anchor for maintenance. They possibly could only do the 10 feet, but if there's something ever came up where they needed to get on the backside of that anchor uphill of that anchor to do any maintenance, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have permission. The, the easement, the, the maintenance easement basically gives them permission to go and, and do maintenance on that.
Okay, maybe I'm looking at the, the drawing wrong then.
Okay.
The 20 feet is the length of it or is it the 20 feet coming out?
So their anchor, where they're proposing is their angle's out 10 feet. So the, the first, the first 10 feet from the wall is, is the anchor. The extra 10 feet beyond that is simply for access to the anchor. Anchors, plural.
And we need to, perhaps need to understand that that 10 feet is no longer you, passable. There's things in, in place that you have to go around and so forth. And they're asking for another 10 feet to get behind those to replace them and fix them if they needed to be done. So therefore that's the 20 feet they're asking for.
It's 20 feet by what?
However, the length of the.
The length of the property, the length of the wall.
If you look on the back of the proposal, there's a, there's a plat drawing that shows the easement.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay.
I see that, but it didn't have a, a length.
They never did mention, but it goes all the way to the corner where that 8B is located. It, it is a, there's a plat there that shows you what, what the footprint looks like.
Yeah, about 360 feet.
Yeah. I was going to do the math there. You beat me on this call.
I rounded up.
Okay. Ms. Hanson, that is, is that?
No, I'm.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to agree with it. I'm asking.
No, I'm just, I don't.
Understand it.
Understand it. I need to, I need to.
We can, yeah, we can work with you.
Yeah. It still doesn't make sense to me why they need that.
Okay.
Mr. Pollak.
I'd like to address that question. This is real property that these people are installing or want to install on this piece of land. If they're allowed to install it under a temporary easement, granting of a temporary easement and that easement then dissolves, their real property then becomes the responsibility of the city because we own that property.
Absolutely.
This easement should be a permanent easement to protect their real property. The extra 10 feet is required for a backhoe to get in there and do maintenance work on those anchors. If they don't have the right to go in there under an easement, then we, the city, have the liability. If they don't have the right to go in there under an easement, then we, the city, have the liability if they hurt themselves on that property, because we own it and we haven't given them an easement to go on it and work on their real property. So, in my, the best thing for me to do is to give them an easement to put their real property on city property and allow them to maintain it in perpetuity if necessary.
Or have them buy it.
Or have them.
Or, what about a permit?
What?
Again, what, what about a permit to go back if they needed to?
Responsible.
Doesn't that clear up the liability portion of it?
Only if the permit was permanent and an easement, this would take the place of a permit by granting them the easement to do this.
Yeah, um, I'm just to quickly chime in here, the easement is the, from my perspective, from a legal perspective, the appropriate remedy, because it's more of a substantive right for the landowner and clears up the liability issues, whereas a, a permit and reapplying for a permit over the current ownership and future ownership of the property would be, um, would be contestable over time or would be unclear as to who's responsible for what over time, whereas a recorded easement into the deed of the property is very clear from a legal perspective.
Thank you, and thank you, Lou, when you brought up the, the liability, that kind of made more sense to me, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, that's all four items. Mr. Higgins?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, those in favor of adjournment signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. We stand adjourned, thanks everybody, good to see everybody.
Thank you. Bye, bye guys.
All right, have a good evening.